All right, Mayor Heading, the floor is yours.
Great, welcome everybody. This is a special meeting of the Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. It is 3:30 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. This meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Thank you. Madam Park, would you establish a quorum, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
I am present.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Heading.
Present, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Again, this is a special meeting to look at our 10-year financial forecast. This is a study session. We go ahead and open up public comment. General public comment is open for items on this agenda only. And I'll ask Anthony, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close public comment, bring it back, and I believe I'm gonna be turning it over to both Mr. Collins and Ms. Liptig. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers and members of the community watching Zoom land and at home. We're gonna share a PowerPoint from Ms. Liptig's desktop, so one second, and then we'll get, we'll jump right in. I'm just gonna provide an introduction and turn it over to her to provide the analysis of the 10-year forecast. There we go. So yes, as the mayor mentioned, today's study session is about the 10-year financial forecast for the General Fund and the Harbor Enterprise Fund. We've been providing these 10-year forecasts to the council typically around the mid-year budget time for the last several years. Management Partners developed the model and I believe presented to council for several years, beginning around 2016, and then the city got the keys to the Excel spreadsheet, which is, I don't even know how many pages, equations that link back to create that nice cover page that shows sort of what it looks like moving forward with certain assumptions built in. And this is a very unique year for a number of reasons, one being COVID-19 and a lot of the pluses and the negatives, in a lot of ways, a lot more negatives resulting from that, as well as the passage of Measure E20 by our community back in November and what that can and can't do to help our overall financial picture. So a lot of moving parts, as well as the fact that we made, council made some rather significant changes to our budget last year to help get us to a place of a balanced budget or close to having to take all of our emergency reserves to maintain core services to our community. So this was very atypical year, which means your 10-year forecast is atypical. What we're looking for today is your review and your input and considerations. Later this afternoon, we'll have our mid-year budget update, which will include some action items asked for council to consider. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, council has four city goals and we're recommending a fifth city goal later this afternoon at the regular council meeting. Chief among those, as established by the goals in 2019 and '20, is achieving fiscal and economic sustainability. A number of action items related to that and providing clear information to the decision-makers in our community is one of those key items. Improving communication engagement, updates to our land use plans, as well as addressing affordable housing, improving public infrastructure, and then this new temporary COVID goal, which will be discussed later this afternoon. But again, council made it a point when they established the goals in 2019 that fiscal and economic sustainability is the chief goal at this time. Next slide, please. And part of that was looking at how, not only to control our costs, but also how we may be able to expand our revenues. We went through a lengthy process in talking to our community, doing a comprehensive community survey, seeking input from our community about their priorities. And they told us that their priorities are particularly around providing public safety services, maintaining 24-hour, seven-day-a-week 911, paramedic, police, and fire protection. In addition to that is keeping our beaches, public areas, and public restrooms safe and clean, including the Marcadaro Harbor and Beach areas. We all enjoy those confines and it's what drew a lot of us here to this community and we want to do our best to maintain it. That was clear from our community in the survey. As well as protecting Morro Bay's financial stability. And that was reflected in the language that was offered to the community in the Measure E20 ballot measure. It is a general tax measure, but definitely emphasis on those core services from our community. And we're at the precipice of talking to council about how those Measure E funds should be spent, especially as we head into the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. As it relates to this 10-year financial forecast, which I mentioned is really unique and unlike any other that we've provided to council, beyond the obvious of incorporating council goals and priorities, and what is typical, and what we saw prior to COVID was our expenditures were rising faster than our revenues, both in the General Fund and Harbor Fund. Long-term, the Harbor Fund is financially unsustainable as it currently is financed, and this has been discussed a lot, particularly around the RV camping program. We made no assumptions in this financial forecast about the use of Measure E going to either the General Fund or a portion thereof to Harbor Fund. So we didn't want to preempt City Council on your guidance and decision-making regarding Measure E. We also assume that we need to address needs in the Marcadaro. Whether it's liked or not, Morro Bay will continue to be a major destination point for the foreseeable future because drive markets are where it's at. People do not want to fly to vacation destinations. They want to get somewhere where they can drive, and this is a readily accessible location, that being the Central Coast. So we want to make sure that we, again, keep our community safe, but also clean. And so that's definitely gonna be part of the discussion about how to maintain our public restrooms and trash, et cetera, in the short term. And also another consideration, since we've heard this from councils, we want to make sure that we continue to be able to attract and retain talented staff members because we're able to provide the service to the community through our staff. And I believe with that, I will turn it over to Katie to break down the General Fund forecast, and then she'll jump into the Harbor Fund, and of course, both of us will be available for questions. Thanks, Katie.
Thank you, Scott. As Scott mentioned, I got the opportunity to learn all about the financial model that Management Partners created. It is a challenge, I won't deny that. I think that the true learning lesson for me is is that it's probably about time to refresh it again. It's about five years since the last time it was refreshed. It's difficult to sometimes follow precisely what my predecessors did as it related to using the forecast. And so I wanted to just hop in there and make a pitch for probably in the next year or so, so that when the next forecast comes around, that model or another model is robustly able to be used. I'd also like to first start by thanking the staff that were involved in this. It would not, I would not be able to be standing in front of you, which I am standing at my standing desk. I know it doesn't look that way, but I am. They were incredibly helpful in terms of being able to bounce ideas off, to create the spreadsheets that feed into the financial model. So just wanted to give a huge shout out to my colleagues and teammates. In terms of General Fund assumptions, they are pretty stark in terms of assuming pretty, I would say, conservative revenue estimates, but also considering pretty realistic expenditure expectations. So we have not included any cost of living allowances for our employees, only step increases. But as Scott mentioned, we realized that there's a necessity to address the competitiveness of the labor market on the Central Coast. We're in labor negotiations right now, as the council knows, and we really need to be thinking forward about how we're going to be able to attract and retain employees. We do have a very dedicated staff. I'm super impressed with everybody on the staff that I've gotten the opportunity to interact with. And we really want to make sure that we continue to be a place of choice for people to come to work. And one of the challenges is that our pay scales are at the low end regionally, and beyond the region, there's no touching some of our other neighbors to the north and to the south. There are no restoration of services, staffing, or funding of supplies or services from the current year budget reductions, with a few exceptions of ongoing expenses that are presented to you tonight as mid-year adjustments. So as an example, there is restoration of funding for the Public Works Director. I modeled that into the financial forecast so that we could see a realistic picture of where we were headed from here. There are a few other examples, adding some additional costs for water and some technical dark fiber costs that are associated with operating our internet service out at the corporation yards. Those kinds of things have been added into the base, but no other restoration of services, program, staffing, or funding for supplies and services were added back in. We've estimated pension costs based on the CalPERS actuarial report, which gives us an estimation of two years' worth of data. So it's next year and the year after that, with a couple of important caveats. Those costs are based on the performance of PERS as it relates to the rate of return from two years ago. So they're all pre-COVID results from PERS that are represented in those reports. And then there are no estimates on some of the second and third tiers because they don't provide them. And so we've looked at the overall rate of increase of our costs historically, and on average, they've been 11%, and so that's what was built into the model. And again, I'll just warn that there's a big caveat there because it's impossible to know what the results are. My understanding is the results were 5.4% compared to the 7% that they hoped for in the calendar year of 2020. So as you can see, not only did we not meet the 7%, but we were down below it. So basically, that's the additional 2% swing is considered a loss for the system. And therefore, they're going to have to calculate that into our unfunded actuarial liabilities. Number four is we're gonna pay off Tier 2s and Tier 3s of our unfunded liabilities for our police and fire plans each year in a lump sum. They're very manageable right now, and we don't want them to bloom and blossom into the unfunded liabilities that are associated with our Tier 1 employees, as well as Tier 2 and Tier 3 for miscellaneous employees. Again, there are no COVID impacts on our PERS rates, our health insurance, and other insurance costs, including general liability. And our workers' compensation rates continue to rise, not as severely as they have in the past, but sufficiently so that we've made an assumption about those cost increases as well. I did make an assumption that we're gonna true up some insurance costs that the General Fund has faced over the years, and we're also gonna be evaluating how we distribute those to all of the funds within the city to make sure it's equitable and the right fund is paying for the right portion of those insurance premiums. We did leave in annual contributions to the replacement funds. This has been a long-term objective and priority to try to do our best to put aside money for when those major items need to be replaced. This amount of money for any of these items is certainly not enough to cover all of the expenses, but it's a step in the right direction. And again, the risk management item is the item that I just spoke about. Our revenues on a number of revenue sources is increasing pretty substantially, and so I wanted to share with you the major ones, and then I've already talked about the major cost driver of PERS. Our transient occupancy tax is exceeding what we anticipated receiving in the annual budget in this afternoon or this evening's item. We're proposing to the city council that we increase that budget by $550,000. That equates to 50% of what was earned last year, last fiscal year, from December through the end of June, which is the end of our fiscal year. And so we are asking the council to authorize a budget amendment that includes that. And so I made the assumption that the other half would be included as a revenue in the next year's budget. The same is true for sales tax. There are a number of estimates that are made by HDL, which is a specialist in projecting our sales tax. They also work with us to ensure that we're receiving both from online purchases, as well as purchases that are made from brick-and-mortar stores. They are paying the appropriate tax, and the state is allocating them correctly to Morro Bay. So again, I'm suggesting that we realize in the forecast, not in the budget, but in the forecast for next year, the other 50%, minus 2.5% so that we can be conservative. HDL tends to be spot-on in my research. I asked them to give me a five-year history of their forecasts versus what we actually recovered or received in terms of sales tax, and they were usually within 1% or less. So again, I think most finance professionals will suggest to you that on the revenue side, you're better off being a little bit more conservative so that there's a little wiggle room at the end of the year, and so that's what that 2.5% represents. As it relates to our new cannabis tax, we have one cannabis operator, as it stands now, with good performance through their first three months. We've made an assumption that it would be solid performance. It wouldn't be off-the-charts amazing because we don't know what the impacts of having a second operator in town will do to the sales. Will they both be at equal levels? Will there be some type of movement from one operator to the other? And so together, they will be providing X number of dollars. So we made an educated guess based on the performance so far and trying to be conservative about that. The one other thing that I will mention is that we've included an increase in our property tax realized. The county provides us with an estimate of those revenues each year. As I said in the mid-year report, I believe that there will be some over-realized or extra property tax that we receive this year. But because we don't get it as frequently, it's hard to judge exactly when and how much we'll be getting it. And so therefore, I included what the county is estimating for next year. We also, I went back with the representative from the Tax Assessor's Office and looked historically what the city of Morro Bay has, or how the city of Morro Bay has performed. And again, we have performed basically on par with the county-wide trend. So this year and next year, the county is projecting a 4% increase in property taxes. And so that is what I've made an assumption within the forecast to show. And in the assumptions, in some years where I'm adding a specific dollar amount, as in transient occupancy tax, in the first year, after next year, next year will show not applicable, so an NA in that column, because I'm not increasing it by a percentage. And again, that's a feature of the model, that those are actually the numbers that fed into the creation of the numbers associated with each of our revenue streams. The expenditure side is much more complicated, and I'm not gonna try to explain it to you. I'm happy to show anybody who has an interest in how the model works. So this is a representation of the model that's contained in your council agenda packet. The three lines that are highlighted in different colors represent some pretty important information. So the top part of the chart before the yellow line is, on the top, is revenues until you get down to the total revenue number. And then about another half of the way down, or four or five lines, there's the total expenditures, and the net annual is the difference between the revenues and the expenditures. When it's a positive number, there are no brackets. When it's a negative number, meaning that you've spent more than you've taken in, it has brackets or parentheses around it. And the reason that 2020 and 2021 show zero is because the city planned to bring in exactly from the General Fund Emergency Reserve what was needed to balance the budget. So it's not a miracle of, you know, we should all go off to Vegas because we can meet the odds. It was exactly planned to get us back to zero in those two years. Again, there were no assumptions about other revenues coming in or other expenses that would be added. So this is a baseline model. So as in 2022, which is the third column over, it shows that we will bring in $294,000 less than we will spend. The ending balance is what is left over from previous years in the General Fund. And so that shows that we will have $4,000 left after 2022, assuming no need to bring in or no decision to bring in any money from the General Fund Emergency Reserve. And again, I'm gonna start calling that the GFER because I think that's a commonly used acronym. So no funds bring brought in from the GFER in 2022. And you can see a continuing pattern through 2031 of bringing in less money than we're spending. And it ranges from $294,000. It dips a little bit in the middle two years after that, and then begins to rise pretty substantially through 2031. The next line that is an important line is the green line, and that basically shows what the ending balance was after you had taken money from the General Fund reserves, the unassigned reserves, and spent it to cover your overages, expenditures over revenues, and that gets carried forward to the next year. And so you can see a cumulative need for money to support the General Fund, starting at $253,000, going all the way up to cumulatively $6.6 million. Now, it's super important to remember that this makes an assumption that nothing else happens, right? We don't add any expenses, but we also don't add any ways to defray those expenses. And that was to Scott's point about Measure E. The city won't allow this to happen. There will be proactive activities that happen and decisions that get made, just like there have been decisions, as difficult as they may be in the past. But this shows the worst-case scenario, assuming that the assumptions are correct at a moment in time. And then the Emergency Reserve is the GFER. Again, you'll note that the transfers out of the GFER are the amounts that we're anticipating or have transferred to the General Fund to get us to the zero number. And those numbers, so as an example, in 2019-20, $1,177,000 was transferred from the GFER to the General Fund to get the General Fund balanced. In the current fiscal year, based on what we're offering at mid-year in terms of proposals, and that's what MY stands for, and I apologize, I should have had a note on the chart that said that. This isn't my chart, and it's not my money. It stands for mid-year. And you'll see in that transfer out that we're proposing to transfer $731,000. That's about $500,000 less than we started the fiscal year because we're seeing a great recovery in many of our revenue streams. But we're still needing some money to bridge that gap going into next year. And then the, it looks more yellowy, but it's orange. It's supposed to be orangey, peachy, I guess, is the ending balance of the General Fund Emergency Reserve. And you can tell that it's growing, but it's growing not as robustly as we needed to in the sense of we need to restore the General Fund Emergency Reserve back to the levels that it was before the financial challenges that the city has faced. And so one of the goals is for financial stability, is to have a certain amount of savings, if you will, in the GFER. And this indicates that, given what we know happened last year, we know what's happening this year. It'll be a little bit better next year, but not a whole heck of a lot. And then it's just, I guess it's the tortoise approach to putting money back in the GFER, but you can tell that that's not a sufficient amount of money to provide you with comfort associated with. If there was another extreme event, whether it's a man-made or a human-made disaster or it's a natural disaster, to be able to sustain the city, there would be, as we did this time with the pandemic, there would be actions that are taken. And I just want to compliment the city. You did the hard work that happened last year at this time to basically pivot from where we were and what our expectations were moving forward to really dealing with the pandemic from a financial perspective in a very honorable and proactive way. So that needs to be addressed going forward in terms of restoring the GFER fund balance. So I wanted to present that picture. This is the same picture of the forecast. So I wanted to present to you the general outlook for the General Fund. There will be an ongoing budget shortfall without the infusion of other sources of revenue, and Measure E is one of those sources. And that's why I put a question mark there, because we don't want to make any assumptions or we didn't think it was appropriate to make any assumptions. It's gonna be difficult to achieve the council's goals in the absence of some other revenue source. And again, without using Measure E, it's gonna be difficult to achieve all the objectives that the community really hopes and dreams that we can achieve on their behalf and that we all agree are incredibly important to having a thriving and amazing community that Morro Bay is and wants to continue to be. to having a thriving and amazing community that Morro Bay is and wants to continue to be. I'm going to turn to the harbor fund at this point. I do know that my colleague and helper on this one, Mr. Endersby, is on the Zoom call. And I'm hopeful that he and I can team this up if we need to. I do want to provide you with a caveat. One is that we've revised this. One of the council members identified that we had made a calculation. I'm going to call it a FOPA. It wasn't, well, I guess it was an error. But we used the same cell twice over. So this is a revised chart. It basically has the same message, which is we're spending more than we're taking in. And there is no major investment in capital, just the same way it was in the general fund. But I did want to highlight to you all that this is different than what was in your staff report. I also will provide a caveat that, and I think Mr. Endersby and I may have a special relationship based on trying to navigate through the model related to the harbor fund. It has not, it didn't appear that this was necessarily the highest priority in the past in terms of keeping up the model. So this tells the story, and we both believe that this is an accurate reflection. The numbers may be off by some percentage, but it's not going to remarkably turn the harbor fund into the winning lot, like they have the winning Lotto ticket. So they are going to see, just as we saw with the general fund, expenditures exceeding revenues. This particular year in 2021, you can see that they have done, and this doesn't include any of the changes to the RV program, to pilot program. It didn't seem appropriate for us to make an assumption that that was going to continue. So they're managing within their means with about $10,000 to spare. And, you know, that's an achievement, given the challenges that are associated with the reasonable and appropriate relaxation of collecting late fees and other things on leases, and then just the other increases in costs that we're experiencing with PERS and other benefits. So you can see the net annual, which is the difference between revenues and expenditures, have the parentheses around them after this current year. And that is true of, on a cumulative basis as well. I guess I would say that whether it's from 323, which is the beginning balance, a negative 323 up to a negative $1.6 million, that is telling a story of we're going to be having a troubled future if we don't take actions now to try to address this imbalance. And so we've used about the same projections and assumptions related to the harbor fund on the expense side. Mr. Endersby used the similar, some of the similar assumptions on the revenue side as the general fund used. So we tried to align them as closely as we could, given the fact that we don't all do the same thing and we don't get revenue in the same fashion. So again, the harbor outlook, on an ongoing basis, there will be a shortfall without the infusion of revenues from other sources. And whether that includes Measure E, or the pilot RV program, or some other creative and innovative program that the harbor team can come up with. And it will, again, be difficult for us to maintain and keep the beaches, public areas, and public restrooms safe and clean. And that's particularly a challenge at the Embarcadero and the harbor and the other adjacent public properties, given the fact that they're so well-loved. You know, there's some who would say they're getting loved to death. But we do have to do our best to put our best foot forward and to continue to be a place, a destination where people want to come and enjoy themselves and feel like we're providing a safe and healthy environment for them to enjoy. So on that note, that concludes my presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'll look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Katie. And I especially wanted to thank all of your support staff that assisted you. If you could maybe remove the screen share, maybe we'll get everybody back. Great, thank you. Please, on the part of the council, I'm sure as a whole, we would like to thank everybody that was involved in the preparation of this. We always look forward to it. And when we received the presentation, it looked simple, but I know how many hours and how many different assumptions go into producing the forecast. So we really do appreciate this and all the time spent by so many people in preparing that. And thank you. We're going to start with council questions. And then, council, after your questions, we're just going to ask if there's any guidance. There's no formal action on this item. It's a study session. But we're just looking for general input and maybe some summary statements on the part of council. Maybe I could start us off, Katie, with some questions first. In the future, if I need slides prepared, would you be the designated slide preparer? Your slides are fantastic. I love the picture graphics that you had associated with that. And I just thought it was really cool and added to the presentation. So that was a question, by the way.
Thank you, yes. I have to give credit where credit is due. Mr. Endersby and Heather Goodwin helped me with some of those photographs, so.
Fantastic, they're great. Thank you for that. I'll just start with just a few high-level questions. I'm not going to get into the detail of it because I know that the assumptions can change rather dramatically based on just changing some of the numbers and values. But here are my high-level questions. In your estimation, is it a fair statement that the potential that the CalPERS numbers used in the estimate on the 10-year plan are grossly underestimated based on the fact that, one, the numbers are based upon two-year returns from two years ago, that is, and the fact that last year, 2020, CalPERS return was 4.5% versus their assumption of 6.75%? And so, again, the question is, are you sensing that in this forecast that the cost for CalPERS may be significantly underestimated or not?
I would say that I feel confident that it is not for the first two years. And then I would say that it's very difficult, as a finance professional, to make a reasonably acceptable or coherent, without being an actuary, how to make that assessment. And so I basically tried to use a realistic estimate of ongoing costs, but it absolutely has the potential of being substantially different. It's going to be substantially less.
Right. So erring on the side of caution, it's probably somewhat underestimated, perhaps?
It's possibly, yes.
Okay. Do the COVID-19 pay cuts that staff took, do they continue in this model?
They do not.
Okay, so the restoration back to pre-COVID pay levels are included in the model. However, and the next question is, just to reiterate, I think, a very important fact, there is no adjustment for any year going forward for cost of living adjustment, just merit movement through the system, right?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, so if, this is just, this is just a number off the top of my head. If we added a 3% assumption across the board for 10 years on the potential cost of living increase for our staff, would this significantly increase our expenses to what you would consider to be a critical magnitude?
Well, I believe that it would increase our expenses. And I think that as we're going to have to do to achieve all of those other priorities and goals that we have, we'd have to find additional resources to. I can run the numbers. I did not run the numbers about what that amount would be. But it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that takes into consideration that pay drives other benefits, like the retirement benefits and some of the overtime and those kinds of things. So the answer is, I would say, yes, it will drive significant expenses over 10 years.
And so I guess, I guess my question is, perhaps you're erring mainly on the side of the fact that it's unknown at this point in time. But isn't it reasonable and something like this to assume some kind of cost of living increase out in the future based on the fact that in your opening statements, perhaps we're behind in a number of areas and it may affect recruitment and retention? And I guess if that's true, why haven't we at least modeled some expense percent in there?
That's a great question. My experience in other agencies is that there is a percentage that typically gets included in the forecast. For Morro Bay, there hasn't been a great capacity to add the cost of living increases. And so I think that has educated many of my predecessors and your predecessors and Scott's predecessors to not set unrealistic expectations about our ability to provide those. I definitely, and I worked on that and just ran out of time to be able to model that for you. And I can certainly work on that to try to help get you a sense of what that would do to the forecast. But it is a typical practice to incorporate COLA's cost of living increases into the financial models that are used for council to make budgetary decisions.
Good, thank you for that, I appreciate it. And then with regard to any potential assumptions for reimbursement from the federal government for COVID-19-related expenses other than perhaps FEMA, which is minimal, have we made any assumptions regarding the next round of the carriers reimbursement program? And have we included that in the model?
We have not included that in the model. We are aware that there is potentially a substantial amount of one-time money coming to the city. The council's policy is to, as much as possible, not spend one-time money on ongoing expenses. So if you have money that you're taking out of your savings account and you're spending it on your monthly rent, at some point, that money's going to run out. And then what are you going to do for your rent? And so the same is true of spending one-time money to add staff or to add programs. So we will be evaluating that issue as part of the overall budget process and bringing the CFAC and the council a proposal that incorporates that within the scope of all of the one-time money needs, whether it's capital expenditures on all of the things that are needing expenditures, whether it's roads, or it's storm drains, or any of the other needs that have gone unaddressed over the years. So the answer is yes and no. It's not included in the forecast, but we're planning to anticipate that we'll know by the time the proposed budget comes out, so that we'll program them with your approval in mind.
Okay, fair enough. And then on the, I'm jumping back and forth from revenue to expenses. But on the expense side, we made some major cuts in expenses, absent labor, not including labor, but on supplies, et cetera, in a number of areas. Did you carry forward that assumption based upon those reductions that were made using this model and forecasting out into the future? That that would be the new baseline?
That is the new baseline, with the exception of the three or four things that we're proposing at mid-year.
Okay. And then I think I understood the rationale, but just to reiterate the fact that approximately, at least the estimate maybe next year for Measure E funds of $2.2 million in revenue, there is no, there are no numbers in here that relate to Measure E-related revenues. And am I correct?
That is correct.
And the reason for that is the statement that you didn't want to be presumptuous as to where those allocations might go for those dollars until council has a chance to speak with regard to that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Trying to get all my questions in and get others. It appears to me that you have been, or staff has been extremely conservative with regard to TOT, revenue increases and sales tax revenue increases. This isn't new. It's a pattern that a number of us has spoken about in the past. If we were a business and had such minimal increases in our main revenue basis assumed based upon past history, it would not go over well with regard to the overall bottom line of the organization. My question is, after all that, why are we so conservative with regard to TOT and sales tax revenue assumptions?
So that's a great segue into talking about what I did to try to come up with those numbers. Fundamentally, I think it's wise for an organization like the city to be in a position to be able to say that we need to give more than to cut back. It's very difficult to pivot and to say, sorry, friends, as we had to last fiscal year. We only have a couple months left, but we're under-realizing revenue. We're not getting as much as we thought we would get. So everybody's got to stop spending. But that's not realistic when you have people signed up for programs and you have ongoing expenses. So the first reason I would say that we're conservative is we don't want to get into a situation that puts the council in a pretty tough bind to have to make decisions about what to cut midstream. Second of all, I have reached out to many of my colleagues in the region to find out what they were estimating, just so that I could do a quick check of, am I being too conservative? I would say that I was less conservative than most of my other colleagues using the past history of a 5% growth rate when we assumed such a drastic cut. And I believe that I may have even included, and I don't want to look for it right now, but I think I may have included 8% growth in the second year. So back to where we were two years ago, not this year, but last year. And with a little bit of growth next year. And then I think I assumed 8% growth in the next year and then down to 5%. Historically, over time, we've been at about 5%. One of the issues I looked at was what's the likelihood of us having room growth? What's the likelihood of us having average daily room rates that are going up? And what's our occupancy likely to be? And so I felt that taking all of those factors into consideration and those data points made a lot of sense to make the recommendation that I've made to you.
Okay, fair enough. And then, did I hear correctly that this budget, or this 10-year forecast, not budget, pardon, my apologies, does not include any service expansions on the part of the city?
That's correct.
Okay. And my last question is one that I asked, I think, last year. And it's this. Given the fact that there are so many potential variables that could be altered or changed in this model, would it be helpful, in your opinion, for council to get a number of scenarios altering some major variables to get perhaps what I would call a best-case, worst-case, and most likely-case scenario for our 10-year plans?
I think that that is reasonable to expect over time. You know, if we refresh the model, we can take that into consideration when we're actually developing the model. There is a portion of the model that does that. So there's a base case, an optimistic case, and a worst case. So there's a base case, an optimistic case, and a worst case. It hasn't been kept up to date in terms of its interactivity within the model. And so that's why I was saying it would probably be wise to get this model, or maybe a slightly less complicated model, refreshed so that that could be something that could be done relatively easily.
Great. And my last, last question is this. It prompted another question. And that was, with regard to this model itself, is it correct to say that this is simply a snapshot in time and this is not an absolute guaranteed forecast of where the city is headed in the next 10 years? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that is an absolutely correct statement.
All right, thank you. All right, thanks. I will turn it over now to Councilmember Davis, sir, for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Katie. I know you worked over the weekend to finish this up for us so that we could look at it. I have a question about Measure E. It's my understanding that the ballot measure was approved by the Morro Bay voters and will go into effect April 1st, and that the measure was written so that the sales tax increase will go into the general fund. Is that correct?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know the exact answer. It looks like City Attorney Newmeyer would like to hop in here.
Councilmember Davis, the funds generated, the revenues received from the sales tax measure passed by the voters, it is absolutely a general tax. And the money goes into the general fund. And then the city council at its discretion determines what to spend it on. In contrast to, it's not a special tax. It's not by law earmarked for certain projects.
So I guess a further question is, is that we're pretty much guaranteed to receive that tax increase into the general fund?
Yes.
Yes. And let me, if I might, just add a little nuance to the conversation and those of you who have been party to the, you know, what's gone on in the past. And I need to review the ordinance that was adopted by the council when it was placed on the ballot and then approved. But historically, we've been tracking Measure Q money separately. I believe it's similarly situated as Measure E funds. And the question that we need to think about going forward, I know that the ordinance, according to the city clerk, allows for it to be basically Measure E and Measure Q to become one measure, or one tax, if you will. And we need to just think through logistically how we want to track it, have there be oversight, and those type of issues. The way that we're doing it right now is very, from an internal logistics perspective, is very cumbersome and very time-consuming for staff. And I certainly would like to have some flexibility going forward about how the dollars get programmed. And then, not flexibility in how they're programmed, because we would use the same process as Measure Q, but flexibility in terms of how it gets accounted for and how the oversight happens. And I actually added that to my presentation at the mid-year because our Citizens Financial Oversight Advisory Committee, sorry, definitely had some input and wanted to get the council's direction on that. And I will work with the city attorney to make sure that we're within the bounds of what is on the agenda.
I appreciate that. I guess what I'm getting at is that we have been looking at the 10-year forecast for several years, and it became obvious to us on the council that in order for the city to survive fiscally, we needed an additional source of revenue. And we chose a special, or not a special, a sales tax to do that. And yet, I am looking at the same 10-year forecast after that sales tax was approved, and it shows me that we're still in the same hole, even though we have implemented the solution to digging us out of the hole. In the staff report, we listed a series of questions about how we should...
Could you try again?
About how we should...
I'm not sure I understand.
Siri. Some decisions that the council will have to make with the Measure E money. But in the 10-year forecast, I don't see the Measure E money being available. So I guess my question is, it's not even a question. It's difficult for me to make a decision without having all the information available. And to me, we are lacking $3.2 million per year additional revenue that will help us make the meaningful decisions that you have, have or in the staff report. And I don't feel capable of making those decisions without knowing the true financial picture, which to me includes Measure E funds. And I recognize, as you say, that it will be treated a bit differently because the ballot measure made certain promises to the voters. But those promises included the items in the staff report that you have asked us to make decisions on in the future, the cleanliness of the public places, and protecting our police and fire services by providing an equitable salary structure. So I guess I'm just saying I would rather that the 10-year forecast included the Measure E funds that we foresee coming in. That would make it easier for me to make decisions.
If I might, I just would say that I totally understand your perspective and respect it. And I tried to scramble, starting last night, to get the model updated so that I could show you what the differences would be if you added $1 million, or if you added $2 million, or you added a half a million dollars. And I simply ran out of time. So again, I can chat with, if I can get it done by this evening, because there is some question about the use of Measure E money on the mid-year budget. So I'll talk to the city attorney to see what is possible for me to be able to share with the council this evening.
And please, Katie, don't believe that I'm casting any stones or any criticism on the way you're handling it, because I know you and staff had some very deep discussions about what to do. I guess I'm just throwing out my perspective and kind of asking the rest of the council to weigh in on what they feel works best for them. And certainly, I'll go along with anything that the majority of the council comes up with. And that's all my questions. Thank you. I really appreciate your work, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Barton, questions, please?
I had, oh, gosh. Am I coming through?
Loud and clear.
I'm so glad. My computer froze midway into your questions, John, so I switched over to my phone. So, and the computer is still frozen, so who knows what's going on there? But anyway, the question that Red was just asking was one that occurred to me. This is all, this is probably sobering numbers. And it would help about making decisions to have the, you know, projections of the new funds in there. So I agree with Red on that. And I also agree with, oh my goodness, what a difficult report to produce. So thank you, thank you, Katie.
Thank you, love. Appreciate that. Councilmember Heller, questions, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Katie, awesome job. It's amazing how you could play with all these numbers. Not just have your brain explode. I mean, I look at it and I just go, wow. It's an enormous amount of work.
I had almost started a couple times in the last couple weeks.
Sure. Question about the harbor lease numbers. Are those projections based on us collecting those lease payments that we've paused or deferred as a result of the pandemic?
I will give my colleague a chance to correct me, but I think we go back to the base. From the perspective of collecting past due bills is a little bit like a one-time revenue source, but we do go back to assuming that we're receiving the full 100%, not waiving anything.
Okay. The Measure E resolution question, I think everyone's comments about Measure E kind of point to the same thing. And that's the question is whether, even though it's a general source of revenue legally, whether or not we need to stick with our marketing campaign to get that passed, which according to members of the CFAC, was 50% would go into emergency reserves and 50% would go to health and safety, police, fire, and trash. So we need to have that discussion, but right now is question time. Question I have also for you, as well as a comment, I think we were lucky to have 25% in our GFR before all of this hit. Plenty of cities did not have that percentage. I think we need to probably think about what a percentage should be goal-wise going forward. What are your thoughts about that, Katie? As a percentage of revenue?
25% is a very healthy number from my experience. And it's also important to recognize and do the analysis about how much of your, how many months or how many days of your operating expenses do you have put away, which I can't do that math off the top of my head. So the council's adopted, sorry, I have to get my abacus out. Some people know what an abacus is. But the council hasn't adopted a reserve policy on all of its funds. And I believe that the general funds is 28% is ideal, and 25% may be minimum. I can double-check that while we're on the break.
That's correct, Katie.
Yeah. So I think that's a pretty solid number. I just would want to kind of juxtapose it to how long we could operate if we just stopped bringing in revenue, which I don't ever think we're just going to completely stop. I mean, really, last March and April was pretty darn bad in terms of, for all cities, in terms of the breaks getting put on in a way that we've never seen before, so.
Got you. Okay. My last question is, is this, Mr. Mayor, is this the time and place when we go to comments to talk about revenue options? Or is that another meeting that we have to schedule?
So that would be probably during the regular meeting on the agenda items for the budget, the major budget report, reserving this just for comments on the 10-year plan and just general direction about future for that.
Okay, good. Katie, I can't tell you enough, this is a great report. It's kind of what we've all known for a long time, but to see it clearly presented as you have done is very much appreciated. And it's exactly what I think we all need to see. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Addis, questions, please?
Yeah, thank you, Katie. I thought that was very well presented and very easy to understand. And so I want to appreciate you for that. And I know you've been working night and day on this. I had a question, there's a section on streamlining city processes, which I was really happy to see. And I don't know if this is a question for you or a different staff member, but do we see a future where people could auto-pay their water and sewer bill? I have had a few people email me about that. So wondering if that is coming and if it's near-term, long-term?
Yes, it is very near-term. We actually approved today a bill stuffer that will be going out with the March bills to remind people that it's possible today, actually. And you can do with no extra cost and with time savings and stamp savings, you can do a direct auto-pay from your checking account. And you get your bill before anything gets taken out. We don't do it until later in the month. My goal, I'm working with the finance team and with Heather and some others to put together a marketing program to make sure that people are aware of it. The sense is, is that we've just historically been so driven by the friendliness and the hands-on customer service that people drop their checks off and, you know, they get to see the staff and things like that. And that hasn't been the case for the last year. And so I think people have gotten more used to doing it in a more, what I'll call, a modernized way. Right now, of the 5,500 accounts that we have of utility bills, we receive $4,000 by mail or by dropped off. So 72% get processed by the two folks that are handling not only that, but also business licenses and TOT. So my goal is to help alleviate some of their workload, which means that they can be a little less stressed out about it. We're also looking at some other ways to process the checks, because there's an automated way to process checks. So we have a team looking at that. And so thanks for the positive feedback. And if any of you want to sign up for auto-pay, we would love to have that happen. And we'd love to take your picture getting it done so that we can actually get the fact that you're all participating in that program.
I think we have auto-pay, but we still get a paper bill. And that was one of my other questions. Is there a way to, and at one point, we didn't get a paper bill, and now we get a paper bill. Is there a way to let go of the paper bills?
I will look into that. I don't know the answer to that. But that is also another, not only an expensive proposition, but it may not be the most environmentally friendly use of resource.
Okay. And then I see that a number of revenue assumptions go down in certain years, sales tax, property tax, rent, fines. And some of them go down to 0%, and then they don't seem to come back up. Is there a reason for, is there a reason for that drop-off?
Honestly, it's because it's too hard to guess what might happen. And doing the most conservative thing is to just bring them down to zero. And some of them were, so there's not necessarily any connectivity to another downturn in the economy or anything like that. It's, you know, once you get past about year five, it's pretty hard to estimate what's going to happen. I've occasionally, oh, it's at home, I use my eight ball and I ask my eight ball. But it truly is a very difficult task to guess, guesstimate. And it's an educated guess, but that's why.
Okay. And then I, I do have some... Oh, yeah, please.
There are some things that we do know. As an example, we do know that the property tax associated with Diablo Canyon is tapering off through 2025. And so that is built in. So with property tax, we've already started to, it has already started to taper off. And so that's part of the county's estimate. so that's part of the county's estimates that they give us. So that's the one place where we know that there are some changes happening.
Okay. And then I have some similar thinking as Mayor Heding and Councilmember Davis, just in terms of wanting to see what could life be like with Measure E in the future. And I don't personally need that today. I actually don't know if I could even process it if you were to bring it back later today. I see that as a future item, where we can think a little bit more deeply about what our options are, and you have time to kind of process and come up with, you know, however many scenarios seem the most realistic and the most reasonable. But one of my biggest questions within all of that is wanting to see some suggestions around how we address salary issues. And wanting to, you know, just take a look at what are we going to do about that? I know it's a problem, and I think you described the problem really well. But, you know, for council to think about that, so now, you know, where do we go from here, knowing that that's an issue?
Not it.
And then in my mind, I can, you know, I can kind of hear people saying to me, well, I know in 10 years, the deficit is 1.6 to, you know, however many millions, but if we're getting 2.2 for Measure E, then it's not really what it looks like. So understanding when it comes back, you know, why do we still have a deficit in year 10, even with this 2.2 million, would be helpful.
Okay.
I think that was all my questions. I mean, I agree with the approach. I don't know if you were asking for our opinion, but, I mean, I agree. I absolutely appreciate the approach of conservatively, you know, thinking about the revenues that are coming in, conservatively approaching TOT and cannabis tax. And I think there's a lot of value in being conservative with that. That's it for me, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. I appreciate everybody's questions. And again, Katie and Scott, thanks so much for your work. Just, I'll go to summary comments, and perhaps I can start. Katie, through no fault of your own, I think you hit the nail on the head with your statement that perhaps the tool's a bit outdated. And I classify it as a bit of an anachronism. It was built about six years ago with some assumptions I think that, I think I know, that have changed dramatically. And I also believe that the tool could be simplified. It's hard to project out 10 years, and I wouldn't want our community to, you know, post this in their office and look at it and assume that this is exactly what's going to happen with the city over the next 10 years, because it's just a snapshot in time. I do like the conservative approach, but I would also recommend in the future, one, that we update this tool to be more relevant and current for today's world. Two, that we look at in the future delivering scenarios, and I don't think we need 10 scenarios, but something as simple as the conservative case, or maybe best case, worst case, most likely case, with some of the major variables, like, per the discussion and questions already, you know, maybe if we included Measure E, with so much of it going into general emergency fund reserves, and if there were COLA numbers in there, perhaps at a certain range, and if we looked at more aggressive TOT numbers, it might end up showing a very different picture. But I guess my point is, I'd like to see a scenario analysis that's pretty simple, maybe just three cases, that would give us an opportunity to look at, hey, here's most likely, here's worst case, and here's best case opportunities. I do believe that the biggest unknowns for me that worry me with regard to our plan are the unknown regarding CalPERS. And I know that as liaison to CFAC, that Katie and staff are doing an extensive analysis to try to understand the impacts of what's happened over the last two years. But my point is, not knowing that, and then the product, this work product being based on assumptions that are two years old, concerns me greatly with regard to that. And so I guess from just a bottom-line perspective, it's time to update it. I'd like to see some scenarios, unfortunately, in the future, based upon other assumptions that could be incorporated into it, so that we have just a little bit better understanding of what maybe the range of potentials are. And I also suggest buying Katie a new abacus, because I saw the one on her desk, and it's old, and she needs a new one. That's a joke, that's no reflection on anything, but I do know what an abacus is, by the way. So that's just my summary. Again, I just want to say thanks again. I know the time that it takes for y'all to do this and to produce this. I greatly appreciate it. But no reflection on staff, I do not walk away with this report feeling any more comfortable that I know exactly where the city's headed. But again, that's true for most all 10-year financial plans. That's my summary, and I'll go to, same order, Councilmember Davis. Any summary comments, sir? Recommendations or thoughts?
Yeah, just to thank you again. And it would help me when we do our budget meetings between now and the end of June, if we could have the Measure E included as a sales tax revenue on the 10-year forecast, bringing that back as a tool to help us make the decisions that need to be made. So thank you again.
You bet. Thank you. And Councilmember Barton, any further summary comments?
I am thinking that, let's see, I'm thinking that the comments that you made, John, are in line with what I was thinking about, that the tool itself is, needs some help. And I like the idea of the scenarios. And of course, having two-year-old assumptions to start with makes it hard to project out. So I think that's a good one, and it was, I was glad that Don brought up streamlining the paying of water and sewer bills, because that's one that had intrigued me also. That was put into place at the last city where I was working, and it was a tough one to implement, because they also were, people liked to come and visit the staff, and, you know, it was kind of a social thing, and it took a while to get that implemented. But it was very helpful.
Okay, thank you so much. And Councilmember Heller, any further comments or thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the most important thing for me is to recognize, and I guess for all of us to recognize and communicate to the community, that in spite of Measure E passing, we have substantial need for sustainable additional revenue sources if we're going to survive as a full-service city. And I think the best way to talk to the community about that is to honor the pledge that was made when Measure E was marketed, which was 50% will go to G-FER and 50% will go to police and fire and keeping the city clean. And I think the best way to do that, as CFAC has made very clear, that a resolution be passed that mandate that, at least for the present, that's the way the funds will be allocated, and the CFAC wants to manage it in a similar fashion that they're managing Measure Q. I'm not sure that I would like to blend those two. I would like to keep them separate, which increases the transparency of how that money is being spent, which I think is going to be increasingly important as we go back to the community and ask for more money in one way or another, whether it's paid parking or property tax increase, or whatever it may be. I think we have to really build trust with the community that you passed Measure E, thank you, we're going to spend it on what we said we were going to spend it on. Unfortunately, we need more money, and this is why. So I think that's key. And CFAC was very adamant about it, and that's what I'm looking for from this council going forward.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. And I appreciate you catching that. I had that in my notes, too, that significant need, I agree, for diversification of our revenues. And I'm right there with you, and your comment about oversight for Measure E as well, coming back in the future, is well taken and noted. Thank you. Councilmember Addis, please.
Yeah, I would agree with the idea of, you know, three scenarios and updating, streamlining the tool. I think that this is an important process. I think it's important to look as far out as we're looking, but if there's a feeling that we're looking too far out, I would suggest that we kind of reassess how far we're looking. Like, if we have a 10-year budget forecast, but we feel like we can't put years eight, nine, and 10 in, because it's just too far out to calculate, which I absolutely understand, then I would like us to rethink if it's worth, you know, putting the energy into those years, or if we should be, you know, looking at a five-year model. And it's not because I don't have long-range thinking, I just don't know that I want to spend the time looking at something if it's not real data. And I think when we look at data like this, you know, it's garbage in, garbage out. Or high-quality information in, high-quality decisions come out. So to me, the quality is more important than the number of years, so that we can make real decisions for the city. And I already expressed the other things I'd like to see in terms of how do we address the salary issues? And with the sales tax, why is there still a deficit? Why would we still need to raise more money, given that it looks like the sales, on paper, it looks like the sales tax could cover much of that deficit? At least I know I'm going to hear that from the community. So those are the general, that's my general thinking. Thank you.
You bet. And thank you, Councilmember Addis. I too agree with your comments also about the longevity of it, or the length of the tool. It's very difficult to plan 10 years out. And so I think part of my comments about looking at reanalyzing this and changing or improving the tool certainly incorporates that into it, so I appreciate that. With that, I'll just ask Mr. Collins or Ms. Littig, do you have any questions or any desire for further input, clarity? Pretty clear with regard to the comments? See that head nod? You bet. And I guess...
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott, for that. So again, our thanks to you, staff. Please impart our thanks to all of the staff in your department, Katie, and all the department managers that contributed to this. We know it's a great effort on the part of staff and really appreciate the time. Thank you for an excellent presentation, and we'll look forward to hearing from you again at our 5:30 meeting. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn our meeting. The next meeting of the Morro Bay City Council is this evening, Tuesday, February 23, 2021, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. So with that, I will adjourn our meeting. See you shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye for now.